Welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley. Today, we are joined by Julie from our team. Hey Julie.
Hello.
Hi. Excited to have you here. Having a girl party here today. Where are you in the world? We want to know. We're in New York and Florida, which, oh, I'm going to be there soon. Got to talk about that.
Yay.
Yeah. So where are you guys in the world? We're always excited to see you and where you're coming in from today. We're going to be talking about communicating effectively with your people, namely with your team and your customers, because that is such a big part, a big priority for for young living business. We're going to talk about how to do that effectively today on our call. And surprise, I made you a thing that you are going to be able to use from the, from what you learned here today moving forward. So let's hear where you're coming in from. We see Tampa, Kelowna, Canada, Michigan. What's up, guys? We're excited to have you. Illinois in the house, Missouri also fabulous. All right. So I'm really looking forward to helping you guys out today. Julie is here to help as well. So if you are here looking for help and it maybe doesn't have anything to do with what we're talking about today, feel free to add your questions to the Q and A, because this is designed to be a live call now or a live support call. So if you need help with something, we're here to help you get it done. This is a live work session. And if you're brand new, welcome. We're excited to have you here. We do this every single Thursday at noon Eastern. And this is designed for anyone who is in team Young Living to, to learn how to be more effective and how they grow their business. And of course, if you're a Get Oiling user, then you know how to learn how to use the platform to do so much more than you ever thought you could before and way less time for your young living business. So without further ado, let's get into some slides and shut off video. But we'll come back. Have a little party later on after we're done with the training part of today's call. All right. So today we're talking about effective strategies for staying connected with your customers and your team. I want to encourage you to go ahead and shut off any distractions that you have. Maybe if you've got social media open, you're doing another thing, you got your phone out to set all that stuff down and maybe grab something to take some notes with. And you're going to want to pay attention to what we're doing here today. Because I think that understanding the underlying sort of factors in how we communicate and how we receive each other is really going to help take you far in terms of operating in a way that gets you more out of your communication efforts in your business. So let's go ahead and set those things down and hone in on this. So what we're going to do today is we're going to learn how to stay in touch with messages that people actually want to open and then read and take action on, right? Because if you're going to go through all of the work to send something out, you wanted to do something for your business, right? So we're going to learn how to do that. We're going to learn that by first understanding the psychology of attention and the mindset that actually makes effective communication work. And it's actually not very complicated. It's pretty straightforward. And I've got a tool to help set you up on the right track that we'll share with you at the close of our training here. And then, of course, as always, if you are here looking for help, we are here to help you. So go ahead and add any questions that you have to the Q and A. And if you would like to join a live call like this in the future, if you're catching this as a recording, like I said, we're every Thursday at noon Eastern. And then, of course, there are a couple of exceptions when there is a major holiday in the U.S. or it is convention, which is coming up here pretty soon. There will be a recording, but you'll always, you can always count on content from us. If you go to goodoiling.com/weeklyworksession, you'll always be up to date on exactly what is coming up and what you can take advantage of. And if you want one-on-one help on a live call like this, I want to encourage you to go to goodoiling.com/websitereview. Now, you don't have to have a website to review to take advantage of this offer. Anything that you need help with, you can sign up for a dedicated space on an upcoming call where we can walk through and look at features of your system together and make sure that everything is plugging up and working the way you want to. Or if you're just getting started and you don't know where to start, this is a perfect opportunity. So set one of these up, you know, consider it a personal orientation. We do this again every Thursday at noon and our website reviews, we leave space for in the second half of our call. So question for you guys. Have you ever felt like you are just shouting into a void? When it comes to maybe getting your monthly newsletters out or sharing your gift with purchase or some kind of update, right? You, you put all this effort into sharing a message and then you wonder, like, where is everyone? I've just shared this. Why aren't you doing something with it? Or maybe you felt like you're posting, right? If you're doing this on social media, maybe you feel like you're posting to a chorus of crickets. Maybe it's just a quick, raise your hand if you've ever felt this way. You've got people that you want to share updates with about getting the most out of their young living experience. And you put this effort in and you just wonder, well, I mean, what was that for? Right? We've all felt this way at some point, because we have so much to say, so much to share. And I mean, sometimes you just have to wonder, why aren't they listening? I could be helping you so much. Why aren't you paying attention? Right? So let's talk about paying attention and what it means to pay attention and what you're really kind of up against so that you can understand the right way to operate as well as the right way to look at this so that you don't beat yourself up when people aren't paying attention. All right. So first, and this is really important, maybe the most important thing to understand, the average attention span in the modern age is the equivalent of that of a goldfish. Eight seconds. The attention span on average, going back to, you know, back in the days way before computers and even before, let's say, the industrial age, you know, the average attention span was closer to an entire minute or several minutes, five even, right? But today, it is a blip of a period of time that we give something before we turn our attention to something else, right? A big part of this has to do with our smartphones, but it even goes back to sort of the dawn of the 24-hour news cycle and things like this, right? The more connected we are to information, the shorter our attention span is. And that means that the attention that we're trying to get needs to be really targeted specifically towards something that is very relevant to someone, right? Because if it's not clear to them what they get out of it, they're not going to stick around and pay attention, right? So don't take it personal when people don't pay attention. It's not about you. Everyone is distracted. So take a deep breath with your frustration there and just remind yourself, this is a, an epidemic, right? This is a global epidemic of the modern age that no one's really paying full attention to really anything ever, right? Now, the next thing that is critical, and this, this is sort of a sequential thing. First, we have to understand that people aren't going to pay attention just because that's how we are now, right? Well, the way that we get them to pay attention is to always keep in mind the two-letter word that means the most to everyone, and that's me, right? That's you. It's that person that you're communicating to. You need to come at them with something that's clearly showing what's in it for them. And if you aren't giving them something that has them clearly understanding what's in it for me, right out of the gate, they're not going to pay attention, right? They're not going to read that whole email if they don't understand what's in it for them. Okay? So when you communicate, make sure that you're clear on who it's for, right? A lot of us, we sit down and we, we want to, you know, send out educational emails. We want to send out promotional emails. We want to, or text messages or whatever. We want to reach out. We want to post. We want to get this info out there. I mean, obviously, A, because, you know, we have a business and we want people to purchase so that that business makes money. But if we aren't taking into account what they need to hear, then the email we're writing is really just for ourselves, isn't it? It's about us growing our OGV, isn't it? So if we can make sure that the mindset that we're coming from, when we are sending out communication, is that, is that of service to another person who, who you can benefit so that they can see what's in it for them? You're not doing this for you. You're doing it for them. If you can make that shift in the way you communicate, people will start to pay more attention and they will be more likely to actually act on what it is that you're putting in front of them. That we have talking at versus talking with. Okay, this is something that I see a lot, leaders. This is something that, that you might need to check yourself on, right? This is using a voice that is you standing up on a hill, speaking to the people in the valley. Be mindful of the tone and the verbiage that you use when you're communicating, because people don't want to feel like numbers. People want to feel like people and they want to feel like people who are valued and heard. So be mindful in the way that you're communicating so that people feel like and understand that you're seeking to initiate a conversation, not throw information at them. People will be so much more receptive. They will see that it, that there's something in it for them and they'll be more likely to pay attention and take action. And then finally, interaction is everything, everything. If you can get someone to hit reply to an email, that is 100% more important than having them read through the entire email that you sent. Why? Because we are in a relationship business where anytime someone reaches out with a question, you have an enormous opportunity to create greater depth of connection between them and Young Living products. Does that make sense? Maybe a quick show of hands. Does that make sense? We have a prerogative to create a depth of relationship between our people and Young Living corporate, the products that Young Living produces. So what we really want is not just to throw the whole pot, the whole buffet of information at people. We want to give them an opportunity to pick a thread that's interesting to them and pull it. And you're there with them or you're there to help point them to where they can go further along that thread, down that rabbit hole, right? So that they can become curious and informed like you are. Okay? So interaction is so critical to get this done. Okay? Now, let's talk about an essential mindset shift. Yellows, brace yourselves, okay? Yellow personalities, take it, take a deep breath, breathe in some valor right now. Like, I'm going to give you a second. Oil up with some valor. I'm going to drink some water. This is, this is a really important thing, but it's, it's, it's kind of red, okay? But it's really important that we all embody this on some level. Okay, are we ready? Here's our essential mindset shift. Some will, some won't. So what? Anybody heard this before? Maybe raise your hand for me. Let me know if you've heard this before. Some will, some won't. So what? This is network marketing philosophy 101. If you want to be really successful in this business, without this business owning your emotional existence, you have to be detached from what people choose to do with their own lives and their own businesses. Operating from this place of detachment is self-care. It is healthy. And it also conveniently puts you at a place of posture that is beneficial to your business. Some will, some won't. So what? This is a people business, right? But it's also a numbers game. That's where the so what comes in, right? We need to find people, right? But we need people who are ready right now to make changes in their life, don't we? Are you with me now? Let's go. You're not ready yet? Let me know when you're ready. We are looking for people who are ready for change right now. And you know what? Some people will show up and they say they're ready for change, but then they're not actually ready. And there's no amount of dragging that horse to water that's going to make them drink, right? If the horse isn't thirsty, they're not going to drink, no matter how hard you drag them. So we have to be detached and we have to understand that some people will be engaged because they want to be. And all you can really do is be consistent and they can choose to interact. They can choose to take advantage or they don't. And you can't attach yourself or your actions to theirs, okay? They make those decisions themselves. They're adults, right? We're all adults. And you can't emotionally attach yourself to the decisions that they make about themselves, their health or their business, right? We just have to show up and do what we're supposed to do. So what does that look like? Our job as a Young Living brand partner is to, A, light a spark of curiosity in the people you know. Get people interested in a conversation about wellness, right? About, about product topics related to Young Living. So about wellness, about green living, about healthy living, right? About the things that you love to learn about and talk about, dive down rabbit holes on the internet about. We want to light a spark of curiosity in the people that you know around those things. And then the curious people, we want to connect them to Young Living products, right? When they're ready, when someone's ready, we connect them. Hey, you ready to get on this journey? I've been down these rabbit holes. I have changed my life. I think yours can too. Are you ready? Cool. All right. Let's get you started, right? So our job is to get people curious, connect those curious people to Young Living products and then point to what they need to succeed with product and business. Point, not deliver everything via your mouth to their brain. No, not to write everything from your hands to their eyes. No, to point to what they need to succeed with product and business. Okay? And then importantly, you guys, this is so, so, so important. Don't be fooled by scarcity. Okay? There are enough people in this world, and this is going back to the very beginning here. Some will, some won't. So what? There are enough people on this globe that are capable of becoming a Young Living customer for you to not worry about that one person or even those 10 people in your organization who just don't want to open their email. Some will, some won't. So what? Do your part. It's this, these three things. You do these three things. They either take advantage of it or they don't. Be okay with that, one way or the other, right? Does that making sense? Does this feel freeing to you at all? I know if you're in a leadership position, this is something that you might wrestle with a little bit, right? All right. So I want to, I'll get into a little bit more of this from a strategic perspective here. Let's talk about how to increase engagement and the effectiveness of your communication and your outreach to your people. All right? The most important, important part here, going back to this being a people business, is that you make this personal from the start. Or if you weren't personal with your customer base from the start, start getting personal, okay? If you weren't before. So first, take notes in your contact manager. Effective communication begins with listening. So if you aren't having conversations where you can listen to your people and then you're taking notes on what it is that they want to hear from you, you can't communicate effectively. So have conversations and take notes in your contact manager. You can tag them maybe with special interests, maybe if it's around certain body systems that you know that that person is interested in or wellness goals. Maybe you've got a tag for moms who might want to know more about things that are related to moms or pet owners, right? Take notes and add tags so that you can be more targeted in what you share. And even more importantly here, I think for a lot of us, we fall into the trap of mass communicating and sort of talking to instead of talking with or talking at instead of talking with, because we feel like it's this huge mental, emotional task to manage all of these conversations and relationships with people that we just kind of step back and we say, oh, no, 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 I can't, I don't have time for that. But you do. If you want your business to succeed, you need to make time for that. And the fact is, is that it doesn't take up as much space in your brain if you're actually dumping it out of your brain into an organized place. And that's what your contact manager is for, right? So with Get Oiling, at every plan level, you have a contact manager. So whether you're starting with us at seed, you know, or you need a diamond plan level, take notes when you talk to your people. And then when you do that, you can add tags to, to sort. You could also give yourself a to-do. If you know that you want to make sure you follow up with that person in two weeks because they were going to, you know, place an order and get started with a particular product, then set a follow-up for yourself. So you aren't just keeping those details in your head. Have notes there so you know exactly what to do next. You don't have to stuff it all into your brain if you've got a place where it's organized and you can refer to it in the future, right? Then, when you're communicating, ask great questions. So you always know what they want and what they want to know from you. So you always know what to send them. Don't send a text class out to your entire organization just because it's what your content provider gave you this month. Not everybody is going to want to know about gardening or skincare or whatever that topic might be. It's a resource you can use in the future, but you want to make sure that you are giving people something they want, not something that just, that you think is going to serve your business, right? Because people are going to tune you out if they don't feel heard by you. And the way that people get to feel heard is to have conversations and ask questions. And then you can make sure that you are sending things that you know that they want to learn more about, all right? Also importantly, always know the next time that you're going to be talking to someone. I call this BAMFAM. It's an acronym. Book a meeting from a meeting. When you are on a call with someone who is your customer or someone who is in your organization that you serve, ask them. Big props to Jackie McLaughlin for teaching me and everyone in this community this. Ask them this question. What does follow-up look like for you? Ask them that question and then make the appointment. Don't have the next time you reach out to them be when you see that their order didn't process, right? Or, or it looks like they're about to go inactive or, you know, whatever that might be, or that they're not going to hit a PV, whatever. Like, just be in touch with that person because you have a relationship with them. Always be in touch. People want to hear from people they like to talk to, right? So don't forget to stay in touch. And then, and this is really critical, if you want to use leveraged communication, newsletters that you send out to a bulk group of people, drip campaigns that educate on different things, ask your person. Don't send out a mass text or email, hey, how would you like to hear, hear from me? No. Ask them when you're communicating with them. How would you like to, how would you prefer to receive communication? So if you do a once a month, first of the month newsletter, maybe you use Grow Workspace for that, right? But maybe you have a weekly engagement that you send out as well that's got tips, right? Or weekly tips or something like that. Ask them. What do you? So I, I do once, once a month as well as weekly. Do you want both of those or would you prefer to just have it all in one? Right? And then maybe you send out stuff for, for your business builders, right? For your brand partners or, or stuff that's just for your customers. So you could say, would you like information that I send out on product business or both? Weekly, monthly, all of it, one of them? Ask. Use tags when they answer so that you can filter for monthly newsletter only, weekly tips only, both, right? You can actually modify how you send stuff to people and go in bulk and meet people's needs and expectations at the same time without it being a huge task for you. If you're following the right steps, if you're asking these questions and then setting these things up. And if you have questions about how to set this up, right? As you're in action, we've got an incredibly responsive support team that's here to help, right? Support at goodoiling.com or on one of these live calls. And then, so important, especially if you have a member area, you guys, show them how to interact with the resources that you provide. Show them. So if you want them to use your website, show them. If you want them to log in maybe the first time into Young Living and, and get their order set up and you feel like they, they feel a little iffy about it, get on Zoom. Show them. Show them how to interact with the resources that you give them, right? If it's very straightforward and you're just sending an email once a month and that's the resources, cool. You don't really have to do a lot of showing, but you do have to make sure that they're signed up for it. And, and you do have to maybe take that extra step and say, hey, make sure that you take my email address and you put it in your safe senders or in your contacts, right? So that you don't miss anything that I send you and make sure you open them. Because that's going to make sure that you keep receiving them, right? Okay, so let's talk about permission-based marketing. Now, we're going to do some do's and don'ts. We're going to start with the don'ts. Okay? Permission-based marketing is essentially you, it's pretty straightforward. It's you asking someone permission to send them marketing materials. Your first of the month stuff, that's marketing. You are marketing products that are this month's, you know, gift with purchase, right? You are, you are marketing information to them in hopes that they will purchase more stuff. This is marketing, even though they've already purchased from you, right? Don't send mass broadcast or campaigns to people who did not say yes to getting them. Okay? Please don't fall into a scarcity mindset. For the vast majority of us, if you were to pull your VO file, especially if it was your entire genealogical file, you would see that there is an exceptionally higher number of people who were once customers or maybe who are still customers versus those who are actually actively engaged with you. And that's okay. It's just how this business works. So don't fall into a scarcity mindset. Remember, some will, some won't. So what? There's a globe full of people, right? And really critically, where we're talking about effective communication, we want your emails to actually deliver. So be sure that you remember that having an active list of 20 people is a million times better than having a list of 2,000 who don't open or click. You want more people who are engaged, right? Who are engaged than people who are just there. You've worked hard to build your business to the place that it is. But we have to keep that, that, you know, scarcity devil off of our shoulder, right? And remember, some will, some won't. So what? We're all adults. All I can do is show up and show you and you can choose to do something with it. And if you don't, okay, I'm here when you're ready to come back. We have to embody that, that posture for our own self-care, right? As, as well as just the benefit of our people. Because they're not going to benefit from us chasing them. That's going to actually turn them away from us. They're not going to be open to what we have to say in the future, right? So don't be attached to what people do. Be attached to doing what you are supposed to do, which are those three things that we mentioned before. All right. So don't take it personal when people choose to opt out. It's not about you. It is about them and usually about their inbox. It's about their personal preference. Or, you know, in some cases, it could be because, you know, maybe you did make a mistake and they were like, you know what? I don't want this. And if they did that, whatever, it's fine. Don't worry about it. Because if you're keeping it personal and you're connecting with your people, you aren't missing out on opportunities. If you see that they've opted out of email, the next time you talk to them in person, talk about it. Say, hey, you know, I noticed that you opted out of email. I wanted to make sure that you're connected to what you need. And they could just be like, ah, you know what? I just have too many emails. And you could say, okay, that's cool. Make sure that you are keeping in touch with that person, right? And then maybe if you build a member area later on down the road, or maybe you offer a new thing that you send via email or you offer to send text instead, maybe they'll say yes to one of those things. But don't make it a thing. Don't be stressed out about what they choose to do. Okay? All right. Now let's talk about the do's for permission-based marketing. Do use tags in your system so that you know who to send mass messages out to. Okay? You could also use tags in your system to determine who not to send messages out to, right? Maybe you want to create a tag that is outreach only and you could filter to exclude outreach-only tagged people from that broadcast you're about to send, right? So you can apply those tags manually on one contact at a time. So if you go into their contact card, click edit, you can add or remove tags. Or if it's a group of people, you can actually select those people. And then in bulk actions, you can add or remove a tag in your contact manager as well. You could also have your system automatically apply tags using automations or a page, a landing page or a page where they opt in, they put their name and email in so that they can self-select to receive your marketing communications. Do also set and maintain expectations with your communications. If you're using a landing page to allow people to opt in, be clear on what you're going to be sending them. Tell them, I'm going to send you an email once a month with tips, quick stories, updates and announcements. I'm going to send you once a week, tips and education on how to live more holistically. So we're telling them, here's when you should expect to hear from me. Here's how frequently you should, you should expect to hear from me. And here is the material you should expect to get, the content and what's in it for you. Be clear on that. People will be more likely to say yes and to do something with what you send to them if they know what's in it for them, right? So be consistent with your frequency. If you send once and then six months later, you send again, people are going to forget that they signed up for your newsletter and they're going to see that as spam. If, especially if they don't know you personally, maybe you're a leader of an organization sending this stuff out. They're going to forget and you're going to, you know, they're, they could mark you as spam. Be consistent, right? So people expect to hear from you. Even if they don't open every email, they see your name show up in their inbox once a week or once a month. They get used to seeing your name. They become familiar. So that when you send something that, that is maybe directly to them and you say, hey, can we talk? Maybe that's the, the, the subject line of your email. They're far more likely to open something like that because you've been sending something to them consistently, right? Then let them know what they can expect to hear from you and when. What is the next time they're going to hear from you? I'll be back next week with, I'll be back next month with, right? Remind them of what you're sending, right? Remember, this is about them. We're serving them with this content so that they can go make better decisions for themselves and their wellness and purchase more Young Living products, right? Remember, this is in service of them and not your OGV, right? If we have that mindset shift, we can start operating logically and easily from this place where people like to hear what we send them, okay? And then importantly, only ever send them content that they ask to receive. So if you've been sending content from one of our content partners, you know, that's just basically educational, Young Living, holistic, that kind of thing, right? If you're sending that stuff out and you decided to launch a blog, but on your blog, maybe you're not really just talking about, you know, stuff related to Young Living. Maybe you're also talking about horses or, or hair care or, or something like that. If it's not directly relevant to the content that they subscribe to, they're going to wonder what on earth you just sent them and they're going to be very likely to opt out and miss those future emails, that future content. So if you decide that you want to start doing something different, ask for permission to include them so that they can receive those new things. Okay? All right. So where do you start with this? Right? If maybe you're wondering, okay, well, like I, I want to do this. It sounds good. What can I actually do first? So I made you a thing and it's going to help you get started today. And it's completely done for you. I will show you how you can make modifications. It is a resource bundle. And Julie, if you could pop that into the chat, that would be amazing. The, this resource bundle here, I've called it a permission marketing bundle. All you need to do is make sure you're logged into your Good Oiling account. You're going to click a grant per You're going to click a grant permission and you're going to click claim. And in this, all you're going to do is send out a saved reply to one or more of your contacts. Now, what I've included inside of this saved reply is a link to an automation that's already included here. And that automation is going to tag that contact who clicks it with while customer newsletter. And then it's going to send a campaign, just one message that confirms that they are opted in to your, your resources, to your newsletter. It also asks them to reply and to share what their number one goal is and what they want to learn more about from you. And then when they click it, because obviously when you click something, you, you don't just stay in your email, it takes you somewhere. When you click it, it takes it to, uh, takes them to a confirmation page where they will see that they are confirmed, they're in, go check your email. Now, what this saved reply does is it says basically, I want to make sure I'm sending you what you want. Okay? So here's something that I've got. If you'd like it, click here. If you don't, you don't have to do anything. Because what you're going to do, once you start using this moving forward, is only send your monthly newsletter to the people who click so that they are tagged with while customer newsletter. That's how we do this. Okay? So we want to make sure that we send this out to anyone and everyone that you maybe have been sending to already. If you're someone who has just uploaded your whole VO file and you're just sending your monthly stuff to your whole VO file, please don't. Because we want to be respectful of everyone, right? Your personals, that's one thing. And you need to be in contact with them so that you can say, you know, which, which thing do you want? Do you want this or that, right? But make sure that you are really working on refining your list so that you are only sending stuff to the people that are most interested. And you know what? You know what? One other thing that you can do with this, you can filter, and I talked about this in another training fairly recently. Um, you can filter in your, your VO just for the new people, right? Or, or actually, no, you can filter your VO and then when you upload into Good Oiling is what it is. When you upload into Good Oiling, you can apply a tag only to the new people, right? So, apply like a one-time tag, like, you know, new week of, you know, May 19th or something like that. And, uh, and then you find those people and then you send the saved reply to them and say, hey, you know, you may or may not know me, but, uh, you know, you're new to Young Living. We're excited to have you here. I have some resources that you might appreciate. Um, if you'd like them, click this. If you don't, don't worry about it. I'm not going to send you anything you don't want to hear. Right? Pretty cool, right? Okay. So let's look at what's included here. Uh, up top here, we have the saved reply that you'll actually send out. And all of this is editable, by the way, you guys. Right? Hey, I, I hope you're having a great day. It'll have their name there where it says Jane. I want to make sure you're connected to resources that help you get the most out of your Young Living products. But I also want to make sure you're only getting the information you want. I've got a monthly newsletter that I send out around the first of the month that includes monthly savings, diffuser recipes, tips, tricks and more. Is that something you'd like to receive? If you'd like to get those updates, all you have to do is click here. If you don't, no worries. You could always hit reply to this email and we can correspond directly. That's all. Talk soon. Okay? This is the email you're going to send, send it out to everybody today. Okay? And then let the people who are interested, click. And when they click, they're going to go to this page. It says, hey, you're in, check your inbox. I'm really excited to help you. I've just sent an email your way. Um, and the tags are here. You don't have to go in and change anything. There's, there's actually a meta tag that's, uh, jane@goodoiling.com right here is actually my underscore email and the number here, the five, five, five is my underscore phone. Uh, and so it says, uh, you know, be sure to add these things to your address book so you don't miss, miss what's coming your way. If you don't see that, then contact me and this just pops up a contact field uh, on, on your website. You don't have to change any of this, you guys. None of it. You can if you want to, but you don't have to. Um, and then over here, you know, hey, your request is confirmed. This is the email that we receive. Make sure that you've got my email saved in your address book. Always reiterate that, right? People will be more likely to receive emails that you send if they're, if you are a contact, okay? And then have them reply. I'd love to know, what's your number one wellness goal and what would you love to learn more about? And they also, at the same time that these things are happening, are tagged in your system with while customer newsletter. Okay? So you send the saved reply, asking them to say yes to emails or to ignore this. And when they click, they're tagged, they're sent that one message campaign and it takes them to that confirmation page to let you know what happened. Okay? Pretty simple. All right. So, um, now let's get into any kind of life help. If you want to see, uh, how any of this looks or works in your system, we could certainly do that as well. So, um, let's see if we have any questions here. Oh, right. Is this bundle just for our team, not our whole email list? So I, you could actually use, uh, you could replicate and use these same resources, Allison, for other purposes. Uh, but if people have opted in who are leads in your system, uh, they've already said yes to getting, uh, whatever you send. This is really more for those of us who are importing a VO file who may not understand exactly how to only communicate with the people who want to hear from you. Um, this is kind of an issue in the Young Living community where, um, and, and to, to be perfectly fair, having been in this business for a long time, I wouldn't work with a network marketing company that doesn't allow you access to your genealogical file. Your list is your business. But, uh, but, but the problem with that is, is that you can download that whole list and then put it into a system like ours and then just send it off to everybody. And there are a lot of people on that list who maybe, I mean, A, they don't know you, right? Especially if you, if you've duplicated in your team, they don't know you and they didn't ask to hear from you, right? Uh, so this is how we solve that problem. So, um, I would, I, I would keep, this is more of a Young Living thing specifically. However, if you've been building a list, let's say for instance, uh, for moms, uh, and you're talking to moms about homeschooling, which I think you do. Uh, but maybe you wanted to start actually blogging about skincare or something like that. Um, or you wanted to create a new offering, then you could go in and say, you know, hey, I'm actually, I'm, I'm going to be releasing this new skincare newsletters. That's something that you'd like. I know you signed up for this mom thing, but like, would you like this other thing? And you could use the same system for that. Shout out to Julie for your quick reply in the chat here. All right, Camelia, where is the training video on how to locate a bundle to use or capture? Um, so yeah, let's, you know what? Let's just go ahead and go over to the Good Oiling site right now. And I'll show you where you can find resource bundles that you've already claimed. And actually, this is when you click that bundle that Julie shared here in the chat. Um, this is where it takes you. But if you want to actually see your own resource bundles, if you've created them, you just click on resource bundles. And we do have a few, but most of us don't necessarily create resource bundles unless we're giving stuff away to our team where we're selling stuff to customers, right? So if you go to my claimed, you can actually look through and see all of the things. So if you are Grow Workspace, uh, customer, for instance, you might see a lot of gross stuff here. Uh, like you see in this particular account. So this is where you go. So that's under my claimed button right here on your resource bundles page, which is in the website menu. All right. How to put information on templates? How do we plug in content? So if you've claimed, for instance, a homepage, which I believe you have, Camelia. Uh, if we go to, I'm just going to pick one here. I think this is, oh, this is the one I believe that you have. All you have to do is click the bundle that you have. You, you're going to click the resources inside the bundle, right? So this is now what you have. You would also find this if you've claimed the bundle, you're going to find this in your list of pages, uh, which is over here on your Good Oiling site. It's right here under pages. I'm actually going to type in homepage to search. And this is actually the one that we're talking about here. So when you click that, you can actually click on any of these sections and then start editing the text. If you want to change the content that's on the page, just click it. And you can swap out the image with something new. Uh, now in that resource bundle, you do actually have Canva templates, the one that, that we're specifically talking about here today. And guys, this is on our YouTube channel. We have this resource bundle with our most recent website training. So be sure to look in, uh, the playlist on websites. You'll see a full walkthrough of this. And this of course has all the Canva templates. So if you wanted to swap out or make this image look different in your Canva, you can do that. Or you wanted to maybe change this flowery image in the background here, you can do that as well. Uh, so that video, uh, is, is going to walk through all of those things for you. Okay, what else? Misha says, I have customers in both English and Spanish and have used tags to sort them. Is this bundle that you just provided able to be duplicated and translated to use my Spanish customers? Uh, so any of the resources that are in there, uh, you can, uh, make a copy of and, uh, and make, and put that in Spanish. You just want to make sure it's set up the same way. Uh, and you can actually see that when you go into, really the most complicated part of it honestly is the, um, is the automation, which is really not complicated at all. Um, so the automation that's included in that bundle, uh, what is this permission is the name of it? Where is it? Did I spell it wrong? No, what did I do? It's in here somewhere. Anyway. Opt into Young Living Newsletter, sorry. Permission marketing is the name of the bundle. The automation is called Opt Into Young Living Newsletter because that's what we want them to do, right? So Opt Into Young Living Newsletter, you would, uh, maybe add Spanish to this, right? If you wanted to do this and, or, or German, if you're doing this in another language, right? Um, but we're going to add a tag here. Uh, and then we're going to also, um, oh, why isn't the campaign attached? Real quick, oh guys, re, uh, reclaim this bundle, uh, if you've claimed it already here live, so that you also get this campaign. All right. So what's going to happen is, uh, you just want to make sure that you duplicate the campaign here. Um, you can keep the tag the same or actually, no, you would need to tag differently, right? Because you would be sending, uh, the newsletter in a different language. So put while customer newsletter, have an English one, have a Spanish one. And you would basically just recreate the, this, uh, this automation here. And then just make sure that the, the other assets that are attached to it, uh, this newsletter opt-in confirmation, uh, which is a single, uh, or this is a page, translate that to Spanish in a copied version, translate this campaign, one email, uh, and put that in there. And then the other thing you would want to change is the saved reply, which you'll find in the resource bundle as well. So it's basically, it's just two emails. One's a saved reply, one's a campaign, uh, plus a tag and that confirmation page. Okay. Would it be too complicated to ask if they wanted to be opted into monthly plus all the details? Or just monthly quick links to sway, da, 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 da? So, I would, I mean, honestly, with what you're sending out, I, I would keep it simple, right? Like have a once a month thing that you send out and the once a month thing has all the things, right? Um, you, if you say I have once a month and I also have weekly, then you have a once a month and the once a month is going to have everything in it, right? It's going to be a really long email, including like, here's the classes this month, right? And maybe you have an automation link in the bottom of that once a month email that's like, hey, do you want the weekly updates? Click here and then they can get those too, have them tagged, right? You can make this a little more complicated in that way. Uh, but if you're doing weekly, then you know, combine, you know, blog is out this week. Here's a blog, you know, here's how, here's the recipe, like it's, it's now a weekly newsletter. Um, I wouldn't create more options than that. Like if somebody just wants, hey, just give me the once a month thing or hey, give me the weekly thing and have those two there and just kind of have a digest of the different things that you're offering. Um, how do you get things to claim? So, uh, all you have to do is click the resource bundle link, which, uh, Camelia, for the, um, for the page that you claimed, uh, you've got, uh, that's already claimed. So you don't have to click to claim anything else. You just need to edit the page. Okay. If you've maxed out on pages, can you delete and just reclaim them again later? Uh, they don't go away. Yeah. So if, if the pages, uh, the, if a page is inside of a bundle, you can reclaim that later. Yeah, totally. 100%. Uh, it's not going to show up with your edits though, if you've modified it at all. That like what you've made your own will be gone if you delete it. But if you want to bring it back in as a template later, then that's going to stay in your, in your, uh, reclaimed bundles. How do you change or add content to the boxes under the challenge section on Jane's account? So let's go back to, um, we're getting that page set up. You're going to have a homepage soon, Camelia. I'm excited for you. Uh, let me go back to this homepage and I'll share and we'll talk about this. Okay. Change or add content to the boxes under the challenge section. So, I'm, we may be talking about this. Probably, let me know, maybe in the chat. But all you have to do is click, just click on it and then we can change whatever we need to change here just by typing. Uh, change whatever you want to change here by typing as well. And then there is that Canva template if you want to have a different image here for what goes here. And again, that, uh, that YouTube video, uh, where this is shared. And you know what? Let's just go ahead and find it and I'll put it in the chat for you. This actually walks through everything step by step. So that's an Arcit Oiling YouTube account. I'm going to look at playlists. And this would be for websites. Oops. That's not what I want to do. I want to view the playlist. Okay, there we go. And it's not, come on guys. Here we go. Show full playlist. There we go. And this is going to be one of our most recent ones. And that is going to be, let's find that, website masterclass dashboard makeover. Is this the custom websites? This is the one right here. Because you can actually see, if I go down here, you can actually see, do, I think this is it, is a bundle. I don't know. This, maybe it's not the one. Julie, do you know which one it is? I don't know which one it is. Let me see. I, we also have it on, I'll tell you what, we have it on our attractable channel as well, but we've done it for both. Um, let me see. Custom websites. Maybe this is it. Is this the one? Is that the one I just clicked? I'm going to find out here real quick. I think that is the same one. Okay. Um, all right. I'm going to find this for you and we're going to make sure that you have got it. Um, I also do know though, on our sister channel, we also have the same, basically the same training. This is, it's, it's for coaches, right? It's very similar. Um, and I'm going to type in website here. This also has a full walkthrough, walkthrough. Here we go. Uh, website template. I'm going to just give you this here. Um, I'm going to type this. There you go, Camelia. Um, all right. So how do you change or add content to the boxes under the challenge section? So yeah, again, that's, that's just going to be clicking on it and then either going replace and swapping out an image that maybe you create on Canva or have on your computer or whatever. Uh, and then any, again, anywhere you see text, you just grab it and type away. Okay. You see anything, any other questions? You guys, good questions today. I'm really curious exactly like where that YouTube video is. I totally like sit here and, and like walk through every single, uh, page on our, on our YouTube channel to find it. Um, okay. What else? What else? More questions. Um, I, did I see a bundle code about the vault opt-in or welcome? Can you walk through those? I don't think. So, I mean, you, you could, uh, go to that same automation, Allison, if you wanted to. Uh, and, and this is actually for anybody who has a member area that you want to invite people to. Just modify the saved reply and, and really just any of the language that's on, um, that's inside the bundle that I've shared with you guys today to include the words, my private member area, right? Our team member area or whatever. Um, and then just make sure the automation, when they click, also adds them to the vault. So that's, that's all you would need to do is just add, uh, to the automation, add to vault. And then just make sure that you're clear in the language that you're using, um, that they're not just getting access to the newsletter, but that they're also getting the vault. Do you find it? You found it. Thank you. I gotta know which one that was. This is, this is absolutely the one. Okay. Um, because it does have the resource bundle and okay, yeah. So I want to show everybody here on the screen. It's called custom homepage for Young Living Brand Partners. It's from August of 2021. I just didn't look for, far enough back. But yeah, there's the resource bundle is right here that we were just sharing with Camelia. Um, and then, uh, the slides from this, you can actually click these. And these are the slides that I went over that day in that training and it has everything here. If you want to actually like have this on your computer, if you know, you want to kind of say, okay, well, what, what do I say here? What do I do here? Use this as a guide as you're modifying that homepage template. And that'll help, uh, help you get that done, I think, more quickly. All right. What else? Um, can you point me to a link or show how you embed code from a YouTube video to put in a lesson in the member area? Oh, all you, all you need is the URL. Uh, so, uh, inside of your, um, classes, your online classes and your member area. Leave here real quick. In your online classes, there's actually a field where you can input a, where you can input a video directly. So, and every single one of them has it. So that's it right there. Um, and then if you wanted to embed like in the body down here, all you have to do is click insert video and then you would paste the same URL here. Um, and then that would put it in the body of it. So if you wanted to have more than one video inside of a lesson, that's what you would do. Good question. What else? Anybody else have questions today? Just to reiterate, we copy and paste the link you give us to our VO peeps and let them respond. No, no, no. So Lori, what you're going to do, I'll walk you through it. Um, what we're going to do, if I could find this, okay. So you're going to click the resource bundle that's in our, uh, Allison. Allison, how do you know which box to put the video in? If it is one video and you want that to be the video for that lesson, just put it right here where it says Video Link. If you have more than one video that you want to include, first video goes here. Additional videos, you can embed anywhere here by just putting your cursor where you want the video to show up, and then clicking Insert Video, and when you put the code in, it'll show up there. Yes, with the gross ways, you're going to take the embed code instead of the link, and put the embed code, and the gross way will show up in the lesson as well. That's right. Okay, so Lori, let's walk through this real quick. So you're going to take the link that Julie put into our chat, which is this one, this resource sharing. We're going to click, I Grant Permission. We're going to click Claim. Okay, and so now we have this Permission Marketing opt-in Saved Reply. This is what you're going to be sending out to your people. So what I want you to do first is click this and read through it, and make sure it says what you want to. Just don't touch this. Okay, because this is already coded up and it's ready to go. It's going to do what we want it to do, okay? And so, once you like what this says, the other thing that I'd like for you to do, going back to your resource bundle here, go back to your Claimed. There's that Permission Marketing bundle. The other thing that I want you to do is look at the campaign here. And again, just make sure it says what you want it to. If, you know, your verbiage would be a little different, again, you don't have to change anything about this, but if you'd like to, you can. And then finally, if you really want to, you can go back and you can look at the page and see if there's anything that you might want to change on the page. I have a cute little cat high-fiving GIF here, Jif, and you can, you know, again, all this is ready to go. You don't have to do anything else. So here's what we do. What you're going to send to your people is you're going to go to your contacts. You're going to filter if you have people who aren't just in your organization, maybe you have leads here or something like that. Then what you're going to do, you're going to filter out your leads and have just your Young Living people. And hopefully, if you've got leads and Young Living, you do have a clear separation there. You're going to go to Filters to do that, and just filter for the Young Living people or filter out the leads from other sources. And then you're going to take those people that you've selected. You're going to go to Actions, Mail, and then under Saved Replies, you're going to go find that Permission Marketing opt-in, and you're going to either send it now or schedule it. And that's it. That is it. You send this email to them, and when they receive it and they click here, they're going to get that page, they're going to get that tag, they're going to get that email that says, hey, you did it, you got it. You're going to be receiving my email moving forward. And then what you're able to do is, when it's time for you to send your newsletter, you're going to go to Filters, and you're going to type in YL Customer Newsletter, because now people are tagged with that, if they've said yes. And you're going to filter for those people. And first of the month, you're going to mail or apply the campaign to those people, right? So today, you're just sending a saved reply. That's the only thing that you're doing. Alright, Cheryl, off-topic, if I want to add a menu header for FAQs on my website, what tech would you use if I wanted to have three FAQs? How to create an account, how to place an order, how do I get rewards and free gifts by being on Loyalty Rewards program? I would actually consider Cheryl making just a page. Maybe you have a page that talks about why someone might want to join Young Living, why Young Living is, you know, the right choice versus other options. I think, shout out to Jessica Doman. She has a page, I think it's Young, I think it's called Young Living. Let me show you real quick what she's done, and she has, this would be a great opportunity to actually put an FAQ in, you know, where she's got links to get started, but she gives her story about Young Living and all of that kind of stuff. And yeah, totally, if you want to include screenshots of walking through signup, a page like this would be the place to put it, right? And so this is really for the people who maybe don't have time to get on a call with you, or maybe you really are kind of more social media forward and just pointing people to a guide to order, not via a direct conversation. So, you know, she gives people, you know, here's what you get. Go here or go here, and then here's Q and A, right? So she's got an FAQ here. So I would recommend creating a page like this one to support that function that you're looking for. And then, and then you could have that page maybe be linked in your website menu. And yeah, screenshots are always a good idea. I find them to be better than video, just because tech can change so much, and you don't know when Young Living's necessarily going to change that, and it's easy to swap out screenshots. Okay. Oh, good. I'm glad that made sense. Alright, Kathy, we've got about five minutes, if you're still here. Here, yeah, let's talk real quick. Hi.
I'm going to unmute myself, okay? I was just wondering if you can look at my website.
Sure.
With it, but I need to see if you can find glitches or something where I need to improve it.
Okay. Sure. Let me, let me open that up real quick, and we'll take a quick look.
Okay.
Alright, and do you have it set up as your, yep, we got a homepage here. Okay. Love it. Help people find better health, wellness, and beauty. Ooh. Where does this go? Nice, okay. So I would, I would actually err on the side of one offer up at the very top, just because, you know, yeah, just, I mean, you could have others on the page. But, and then one other thing, I would, I would write a little bit more here, right? So, you know, three ways to look 10 years younger, or, you know, here's how you can look 10 years younger in three minutes a day, or something, just add just a little bit more. Yeah, or even just get my guide to looking 10 years younger, but I would still jish it up a little bit with just a little bit more verbiage there.
Okay.
This is, this is very pretty. Okay. So here we go. Put the Simple Start to Natural Living here, right? So have maybe a two-column section where you say you can get amazing access to da-da-da, and then have maybe an image, and then they can, you know, click and opt-in and get the simple start.
Okay.
I'm obsessed with this tie-dye. I love that. Oh, and it's a GIF, look at that. Okay, so what is? What is the Serendipity Collective? Where is that? Okay, so here's a question. Right here, we don't have anything to click to. Are you basically saying, when you opt-in to get the simple start, you'll also get access to this?
That's because I gather their information first, and then they get access to the learning hub.
Got you. Okay, okay. So what I would, this is so cute what you did here. Maybe, maybe the answer then is, as we say, instead of putting that here, I would maybe have some kind of a pretty picture, you know, that indicates, you know, the simple start to natural living, and then have all of the text here that, you know, similar to this, say, you know, click here now to get access to the Simple Start to Natural Living and get access to my Serendipity Collective. Like, it's a little hard to understand, because it's, it's, you have to keep scrolling, you know, to be able to kind of, it's, we need to put a whole sentence in one section, I think, is kind of the point that I'm not making well here. Okay, it's so cute, though. I love it. Okay. Click here to answer. What do you do here? Ooh. Okay. Okay, I'm into this. This is great. Okay, no, this, I love that.
Okay.
Okay, I love that. Alright, and that's opening on this page. Okay, perfect. And the others are clicking off somewhere else. Okay.
Okay, now I also offer the iToVee if they come to my home. And I do have my home open for my people if they can come. And then I am fixing to put something with the voice-activated frequencies. So there's three ways there.
Okay, and then you've got... Oh, that's exciting. I think it looks like this, this is all going to, like, everything's clicking off to the right places. I just think that it would be more advantageous for you at the beginning here. Just to make sure that when you're grabbing someone's attention, you can effectively get their information as quickly as possible. Because going back to that goldfish thing with the eight seconds, if they don't know what, like, what's in it for them to keep scrolling, we might lose them. So that's really the main thing that I would address here, and you could kind of tie this together. Yeah, you could kind of tie this together, I think, copy-wise, a little bit more cohesively, just to say, you know, make sure you sign up now, because when you do, you'll not only get the simple guide to natural living, you'll also get access to this amazing community. And then maybe in here, you actually talk a little bit more about what's in the community, and you reiterate that same call to action for them to join the community.
Okay.
I love your creativity. That tie-dye is awesome.
Thank you, Ash.
Absolutely, anytime. Alright, alright, I think, okay, there's two more questions, I think. No, that's a good example. That one's done. Okay, if you have a saved signature, hi, Jan, for your saved replies, it includes your name. Will it show twice with the campaign in the bundle? Yes. Because, yeah, if you have a campaign, or sorry, if you have an email signature set up in the system, you will want to modify the saved reply and that campaign just to remove the My Name tag. Right? And that's it. And that way, you won't have your name and then your name in the signature again. Good catch, and thank you, Jan. Hi, it's good to see you here. Okay. That is it. And yes, Camelia, her site does look great, doesn't it? It's so colorful and inviting. It's perfect. Alright. Thank you, guys, for being here. We will be back here next week, same time. I hope you guys put that saved reply to use today and start using Permission Marketing with your people, and we'll see you next time. Have a great week.